I order the regular meeting of the Madison Central School Board for Monday, February 13th. Mr. Jorgensen will record the members present or absent, and we do have a forum this evening, so we'll move on to item number four, which will be the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First action item then is number five, which would be approval of our agenda. I believe we have no changes, so it would be as has been distributed. I entertain a motion for approval. Mr. Moore has a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Thompson. Further questions? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the agenda, signified by saying aye. Opposed, nay, declare that the agenda is approved. In terms of the consent agenda, items seven through nine, we have our minutes. It wasn't Sean, it wasn't Steve, and it wasn't Jenny that went through the bills. It was Leah, and Charlie, and myself, and Kami. We kind of ganged up on them and got things done there, and had some questions, but they got everything answered that we had. So that all seems to be in order, and all of our financials are out there, and they seem to look good for this. So we're down to number nine on personnel actions. Mr. Jorgensen?
There's three of them down there. James Albersen hired his elementary custodian, replaced Cole Asikson. Remember Cole resigned back in late December, I think it was, or early January. Contract for Steve Millich for as director of technology, and it's promoted for this year to finish out, and then in the next year. And then resignation of Scott Lawrence, he's a high school English teacher and a Bay coach. He is continuing his education, doing some more schooling, so.
Okay, so recommendation would be obviously to approve the personnel actions. I entertain a motion for our consent agenda items to be approved. Mrs. Sims, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cecil. Further questions? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signified by saying aye. Opposed, nay. I don't see anyone who wishes to address us, so we'll go on to number 11, and we know of no potential conflict disclosures. So then that goes on to Dr. Cook's written and videoed report. Someday if I want to learn how to do YouTube, I know who I'm going to come see, okay? They're good.
It's okay? Is it all right? It's time to see.
No, no, that's good. So that was the written report. Mr. Jorgensen, do you have some things also?
Just a couple items. Obviously, congrats to the gymnastics team and coaches on their state championship. And then we're getting to that time of year where wrestling regions this Saturday, I believe, and the girls' basketball region start next Tuesday, and boys the following Tuesday. The CTE Auto Shop, which will tour tonight, it's all said and done. The state ended up paying for $237,999.07. And the district will pay around, when it's all said and done, right around $10,000 of the total project. So, you see, that's nice. Turned out really nice. Mr. Shaw will give us a tour of that facility. King Gray was able to also work at the hospital, and she got us EpiPens lined up for all the schools now, along with some cases that they'll be in. They'll be located in all the schools, one by the gym as well. So appreciate her getting that taken care of for us. Roofing project, we talked about last month. We met. We will have information back by the end of this month, so we will bring information to the March meeting as far as roofing project and how we want to move forward on that. And then just a handful of legislative bills. I'm not going to go through a lot of them, just a few to keep an eye on. There are two conflict of interest bills. Number 11, that's on our agenda every month. One is Senate Bill 27 by the Attorney General, and then one is House Bill 1170 by Representative Mickelson. So hopefully there will be one, not two, that go through when it's all said and done, but we'll watch those. Senate Bill 134 has not been heard yet, but that would make it. So events like we had on Saturday, the crack of a rail company hell, we would not be able to email legislators. We wouldn't be able to have anything from a school side, and you cannot communicate, basically. Wouldn't be able to have the pre-meeting, just to get to meet them. So we obviously are not in favor of that. It's just, we need more open communication, not less of it. Hands-on CPR is a bill that's going through right now. We've had discussions on this already early in the year about what we may do, regardless of whether it passes or not, what we're planning to do for next year to get our kids CPR ready. And then there are a handful of blank bills right now that are simply just blank, education plus or whatever. It's just an empty bill that's going to end up with something in it when it's all said and done. And then the very last one we'll touch on is Senate Bill 177. That's about homeschool participation. For activities at school requires one period, which we currently have in policy, but the main difference in this bill is that if a student is struggling and they decide just to homeschool, currently by the Activity Association, they're ineligible for a year if they go from a public school setting to a homeschool setting to avoid a grade situation. This would make them eligible immediately, which really makes more sense because it would be a situation where a student is not meeting the criteria they need to meet to pass classes, and yet that would be a way to just dodge having to have grades and be eligible for things. Just a few of them that we're watching. And again, we'll talk a little more later about the SRO, but hopefully we start having conversations shortly on the SRO contract.
Mr. Shaw, anything you want to add?
Oh, we're just busy getting ready for next year. We got a class there with our kids Thursday, and then we'll register them at the end of the month, and then the process of building schedule for next year will begin, so.
Fun!
Lots of good things going on, busy.
And Paula, we're going to hear from you later. Anything else? Anything you want to add, Dr. Cook?
I don't know. Good.
Okay. We missed the demo.
Yeah. You'll have to come up there and ask me.
There'll be a YouTube on that next month, okay? I just want to mention a couple things from ASBSD. I had the opportunity about 10 days ago to go into DC and be part of our South Dakota delegation of executive officers. We had an opportunity to meet with our two senators prior to the voting for the Secretary of Education, and obviously we had no real impact there on the vote with that. And then we also had a chat with Representative Gnome, and we got about three minutes with Senator Rounds. We got pretty much a full half hour with Senator Thune, and a little more than a half hour with Kristi Gnome as a part of it. It was real interesting. There were protesters outside our hotel because they knew that some of the senators were addressing our group that were on the Education Committee of the US Senate, and so when we came up from the basement, there were the protesters outside and all of that. So it was kind of interesting to be a part of that. This Tuesday is Legislative Day. I've invited all three of our local legislators to join us for lunch in Pierre. I've heard back from Representative Wheezy and Senator Youngberg. Have not heard back yet from Representative Heinemann, but I will check to be sure. So we've got that going on in Pierre. And then the other thing I just need to inform you of, and then I'll have to have Kami sign, is my term is up on the ASBSD board, so I'm going to seek reelection on that, and I need to have Kami sign off to indicate that the board is knowledgeable of me continuing with that. But I think it gives us tremendous advantage to learn some of the things that are going on, both locally and nationally. That's the ASBSD. Do you have some certificates there, Mr. Jorgensen?
I do. I read it off in recognition of dedicated leadership on public education and for improving achievement for all public school students. The Associated School Boards of South Dakota honors the Madison Central School Board members with South Dakota School Board Recognition Week, February 20th to 24th of 2017. Anita Peterson, President of the Associated School Boards of South Dakota. So I'd like to thank each of you. Thank you for the certificates. Thank you, Brian Hsu, for the students.
Thank you, sir.
And staff of the district.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right. Mr. Jorgensen, Mr. Brooks, myself, and Ben was going to be there, as was Justin, but there was an emergency that they got called out on. Charlie was there also when we met with the county commission to begin the discussion of the SRO program. The county commission has pretty much indicated that Kelly Wolman will be the person that will be a part of the group that will begin the discussions there.
Are you sure?
No, it was Deb. Or it was Deb Reinecke, I'm sorry, not Kelly. Yep, Deb Reinecke, I'm sorry, was the one from the county that'll be working with us. So I think it's time that we designate our group that would be willing to meet with that, and Jenny has indicated that she would have an interest, and Charlie would have an interest, and so we probably would have the two board members, and then we'd ask that Mitch and Joel be a part of that discussion. I'm assuming the city will have a similar delegation, probably with Justin and Mike Waldner for sure, and possibly the mayor. It's important for us to get this decided because our budget year runs differently than does the county and the city. They're on a calendar year, we're on our fiscal year, and we've got to be sure that we have the information to be sure to continue that service in our budget for next year, which we'll be working on budget, probably come up sometime. Well, Mitch probably is already beginning to work on it, so we want to try to get that done. So I guess the hope would be that sometime prior to our March meeting, that that group would gather and go ahead and go. So I guess we need a motion to appoint our two board members. We might as well appoint the entire group for that. That would be Mr. Jorgensen, Mr. Brooks, and then our two board members on there. So I'd entertain a motion for that purpose. So moved by Mrs. Sims, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cecil. Further questions? Discussion? Appreciate people volunteering very much. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Congratulations. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Item number 15 then, approval of the district calendar. Steve, you want to bring that up off the hyperlink there? And Mr. Jorgensen, do you want to lead the discussion on that?
Sure.
Sorry. I'll just click it. I have it all up and ready to go.
We've had a number of meetings on it with administrative team, with a couple of the MEA, going through different things, and like you can see, a lot of the months are the same. The first few months, August, September, and October are pretty well clones of last year. In November, the change would be that on the 6th, this year conferences, you know, were done earlier. On the 6th then of November, the big change there would be that I mean, I have no school in the morning, and conferences will run from 12 to 8. That allows for more slots for the elementary and for the middle school to fit all their other timeframes. Nobody's ever scrambling, and nobody talks about that. Thanksgiving, nothing changes there. December, same thing. We go through the 21st, that'd be a full day. We come back on the 3rd, which we did this year, but it would actually be a day later, so we'll have it Monday and Tuesday off. The 15th then of January corresponds with the West Central Professional Development, which is an all-day we've attended for a handful of years, I believe. In February, we made a change. Last year, the 7th was a full day of in-service. We changed that to just a half day of in-service. And then same thing in March. Instead of having an early release on the 7th, just because we're Easter falls and spring break and different things, we didn't take that day off for our professional development. The other change would be then, conferences will run on the 12th and the 13th from 4:00 to 7:00 each night. Get down to April, the only change there is that Easter Monday, we had school on Easter, we will have school on Easter Monday this year. We propose not having it for next year on Easter Monday. And then what that does, it slides it back two days into May, so graduation, that would be slid back, it would not fall on Mother's Day, it'd be a week later. Questions? Comments?
If not, would someone wish to make a motion that we approve the district calendar and the start date for 2017, 2018? So moved by Mrs. Sims, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Moore. Further questions? Discussion? I like it. I like it lots. Looks very good. No further questions or discussion? All in favor of approval of the district calendar and start date, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, declare that you've got your calendar. On to item number 16, that is, South Dakota Comprehensive Plan. Come on now, Paula.
Well, it's just as a signature.
Oh.
Nothing has changed since last year.
Okay.
And so we just need a signature that the board has seen for this year. And what it is, is the procedures that Special Ed uses for this year. Next year, we may have some changes. So do you have that sheet?
I do, yeah.
Okay. I'll just, have you signed it?
I will right now.
I'll slide it in here.
Just Joel signs it, or like, it's a no case?
Yeah.
I'll save mine.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Do we need any action on that? Okay, so what we need to do then is we need to have a motion and a second to accept, Paula would be the terminology?
Yes.
To accept the South Dakota Comprehensive Plan, which is the same as what we have done on that year. So, okay, Mr. Moore makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Thompson. Further questions or discussion? Hearing none, signify by saying aye. All opposed, sign. Motion carries. Item number 17 then, Consider Proposal for Middle School Boiler Project.
We put this out before, and it came in. It was bid in two different projects. The main project was the middle school boiler project. It was ventilation, replacing the valves. Right now, we have nine boilers in the middle school, of which two of them are already down. Where we're crossing our fingers we got through this year, hopefully. And so this will replace those nine with three, which would be more efficient, and it would take care of the project of the building. The reason we bring this forward now, to be moving on, is the fact that it takes over, I think it was six to eight weeks just to construct the boilers, so it's a two-month timeframe just to even get them made. And they would start this project probably the day after school gets out, to get going on it to start, so we could have it in by the start of the school year, or close to the start of the school year. But the base bid came in at $325,359. That was $325,359. And again, that's for the boiler systems being replaced in the middle school. The alternate, excuse me, alternate number one was the chiller, and replacing the chiller unit, there's three of them that right now, and we'd be replacing all of them. That alternate came in at $123,434. Right now, because we don't know the roof project costs associated with that, as we looked at it and reviewed it, we would recommend that we just accept the base bid for the boiler system, and we put the alternate on hold for now. Once we get the roof bids in, we could always go back and accept it if we feel we need to, but even if that went down, in talking with them, we could let by on two of the chillers if we had to for a while. So whereas the heat, another boiler goes down, we're going to have issues trying to heat the middle school building.
And they go 45 days, you have to accept the alternate?
Forty-five days. So that gives us time once we see where the roof project would come in, if we want to go back, and there'd probably be some savings, obviously, having that at the same time versus a few years down the road, having to do this, since they're on site and immobilized. Putting in with the roof project, we're waiting to see where that comes in at. It's sort of hard.
There's also the co, getting air conditioning to the two middle school gym.
Ventilation.
Ventilation and stuff in the middle school locker rooms.
Yeah. We would recommend the base bid right now, and then we'll hold off on the alternate number one until we know more information on other projects we're looking at.
So we have a recommendation from the administration for the acceptance of the base bid, if there's someone who wishes to make that motion. Okay, Mrs. Thompson, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mrs. Cecil. Further questions or discussion? I like the strategy we're using, see where we go. We can maybe survive with a little less cool, but we sure can't survive without heat, so it's critical we get that done. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, declare that we will accept the base bid and move forward with the boiler replacement for the middle school.
I'd just like to say, Dom, I liked how, Chairman, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
That I enjoyed the process of being a part of that that came out of our board retreat, that I decided that group, I learned a lot from Mr. Jorgensen and Mr. Brooks and Rick, all three, it was a really good learning experience for me, and it was really interesting to watch those guys work those bids. I feel like we got a couple of extra pieces of candy, you know what they were doing, and I enjoyed that part.
That was a nice advantage of doing it that way, to have G and R do the specs and be able to help us through that process, because not many of us know much about boilers. All right. Thank you for the comment. Item number 18 then is, Consider Renewal of the Agreement with the After-School Care, which is really the summer program. Mr. Jorgensen, you're on a roll.
Correct. And the only change to it is, there's 3% that's been built in over the years, so it goes from $5.30 per student per day to $5.45 per student per day. So the total amount roughly is going to be around, if it was 65 students and the number of days it projects, it's going to be around $700 for the rental.
Did you mean $3?
What did I say?
You said $5.
Three, yeah, $3.50 to $3.45, excuse me, $3.45, no, not 3%, yeah. Correct.
Okay. $3.50 to $3.45.
Yeah.
I have $3.30 to $3.45.
Yeah, $3.30 to $3.45.
Yeah. Yep.
I did write down $5.30 in my notes here.
Yeah.
But it is $3.30 to $3.45. Thank you.
All right. So this is a program we've supported through the past, and the 3% is a figure.
Okay, now, hold on. It is, it is $5.30 to $5.45.
It is, okay.
I was assuming you had it incorrect earlier.
Okay.
On the contract, that was a 15, 15 cents went from $5.30 to $5.45. Sorry about that.
One more time to change.
$5.30 to $5.45.
All right. So the motion would be to increase the rate and to approve the contract for the after-school summer program. Go from $5.30 to $5.45. So moved by Mrs. Thompson, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Moore, is there further discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor of approval of the after-school program, summer program agreement, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, declare that that has passed. Item number 19 is Recognize the Madison Education Association for Negotiations. This is a matter of a formality. They've submitted their form, they've listed their negotiators for the upcoming year, and probably following the last day of the regular legislative session, we'll get together with our negotiations team from the board and sit down with the administration, and depending upon what comes from Pierre, at one point in time, we were real excited that 1% might be coming, but everything we're hearing is, don't count on 1%. Count on potentially less than 1%. We're entitled to .03% by a state statute, so at least we'll get something on that. So we need to recognize the Madison Education Association. So moved. Okay, I'm going to give that one to Kami, and then Charlie, you get the second, sorry. All right. Further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of recognition of the Madison Education Association, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Number 20 is our audit report. There's actually two things for your consideration there. The first one is a letter from Quam Burden and Post, certified public accountants, out of Elk Point, and they're basically explaining what their process was and how, what their role was. And then we have the complete audit report in front of us, and the page that Mitch told us to look at was, which page again, Joel?
Page 18 is the, I mean, most part of the funds.
That shows where we're at with our funds, and everything within the rest of these multiple pages of the report basically support that. It shows what we did during the year that ended June 30th. Our general fund, we worked on, there was a reduction in the balance in that account of 127 some thousand in the capital outlay, reduction of a fund balance of about 270. Special Ed, we finished with a little bit of a surplus, 2,300. Pension fund was up to 168. Our bond redemption fund was down, and all of the funds total came out to be at that, total governmental funds, at the 209. If you take a look at the very bottom lines then, it shows where those balances were at the end of June, where they were at the beginning of July, and supports that. So our major role as a board is to acknowledge receipt of the audit. The findings on the audit were very positive. We have one place that I think, of the 150 school districts in the state of South Dakota, 148 of them get binged on, and that is segregation of duties in the business office, not enough people to handle the handling of the money, and that's something that we see each time, and like I said, it's very common in most, any medium to small school district has that same thing that auditors are always going to find. Any questions before we actually take formal action? Okay, then I would accept a motion for formal action. Okay, Mrs. Thompson is going to indicate that we accept, I think is what we want to do. We want to accept the Quam Burden audit report. I need a second. Okay, by Mrs. Sims. Further questions or discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor of accepting the audit report, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Mr. Shaw, would you really like to do the tour before we do chapter four?
Whatever makes you guys happy.
Well, what would make you happy?
I'm in no hurry.
All right.
You can have, why don't you just get, I'm just going to go take.
I just heard a rumbling, you know?
I wanted to be first. I'm like, oh, I don't know.
You know, we try to get these done in somewhere between an hour and hour and a half, Adam, so.
The book study or the board meeting?
The book study. The book study.
I've got lots of questions on this one.
All right. So I'm going to steal a projector from Steve here. And then we're, we're going to power point up. And we're into chapter number four. So again, this talks about who basically runs the school in terms of things, and it's the board and the superintendent. They talk in this particular chapter, we're going to take a look at how the relationship between the superintendent and the board works, and again, I think many of the things that are mentioned in this chapter, we already do a very good job on. It was kind of fun to go through and say, okay, those are things that we are working with as we go through. From the board's responsibilities, you know, our biggest responsibility is focus on the end results for the district. We should ask questions about why, how much, and how well do we want something completed? We do a job, we do our goals, we take a look at some of the assurances that things will happen, and the overall responsibility of us as a board is to vote on issues that directly impact student achievement is one of the things. The superintendent carries out the policies, questions they need to focus on include how, when, where, and whom things will be done by the superintendent, needs to establish procedures, and again, we see that we have recommendations that come back to us for approval. There's a good working relationship. Research has shown that the positive working relationship between the board and the superintendent, they talk about impacting student achievement. I just want to say that it impacts the entire environment of the school as it goes through. And I think, you know, we've had a couple of times where we've had some contentious situations, and things haven't always been hunky-dory, and you can just see that negativity going through things with harmony and cohesiveness. It's imperative that the board members and superintendent work together. We've got to keep. We've got to keep that positive working relationship. Disclosure, do they make put that word up there anymore, but the cornerstone of a strong board partnership is the fact that the disclosure of school problems to the board members, there's a completely thorough disclosure that requires the superintendent, has to be open, receptive to inquiries. And again, I think, you know, Joel does a good job with that, with us, keeping us informed, whether it be by text, whether it be by email, as to things that are happening and I really appreciate that and I think most of the board does also.
We do.
Two-way communication and again, I think we have very good methods of communication that we work with. And again, I think the board feels comfortable going to Joel and Joel certainly feels very comfortable coming to us. And before major decisions are made, we've got to have an opportunity to get our information. I think that's the advantage of getting our agendas out early enough so that we can have time to study the issues and be aware of the items that we're going to be dealing with on our meetings. Careful planning, avoiding most surprises. Superintendent board should plan together. Planning begins with adopting goals and the superintendent, as he does very well, keeps reminding us where we're at with what we said we wanted to get done. And there's a chapter on strategic planning, which we'll take a look at whether we want to look at that or not. What a school board accepts from, expects from the superintendent, integrity and ethics, belief that all children can learn, readiness to do the job, ability to develop, maintain, and implement the policies, sensitivity and communications and delegation skills. What should a board member continue? Some of the other things, prudence in this manage of school resources, our long-range financial and district-wide planning skills, develop relationships with the board, provides good, understand employment recommendations, and no surprise philosophy to both the board and the staff relations. And again, what should he expect from us? Trust, confidence, professional respect, a desire for fair, honest job evaluations, adherence, considerations, and staffing recommendation, and board members who come ready to do their jobs. And again, because of board, you folks do a wonderful job in those areas. We want high, should be able to expect high standards of ethical behavior, realism, goals, belief that children can learn. And again, from our side, we don't want to surprise the superintendent or the administration as we move forward. Selecting a superintendent, we did that and we're happy with the process and the results. So I didn't say any more about that one. Evaluating the superintendent, we have an opportunity to do that and we've been working with that. It's important, you know, that the superintendent knows where he sits with us. It's recommended there be at least an annual evaluation. Evaluation form is completely completed during an executive session and some of the strategies that we're still working towards on there. When a board evaluates a superintendent, there also could be an opportunity for board evaluations. We need to take a look at the timing on that and again, that's a process that we're still in the process of working at and looking at. The comprehensive superintendent evaluation, talk about linking academic, social, and emotional goals, recognize the importance of the superintendent's work. And again, those are things that we're looking towards. Provide research-based criteria. Provide opportunities for personal and professional growth. Be ongoing and connected again to the things that are important to the district. Connect to the district's goals, be intent, tended to provide improved performance, not prove incompetence. And there are things that ASBSD has and they're out on their website. How was that for play? Half Chapter 5, I won't do that one. All right, we're on to our tour. We need a draft partners or?
No hard hats.
No hard hats. Steve, I think then you could probably stop the broadcast because we don't want to do the adjournment and then you can go home.
Sounds good to me.